fifty one and I'm not sure. And he's he asked me, what are you doing dad? Well, I said this, that and the other. And he said, now, what he's done, he's traveled around the United States. Seriously? He may be in California one day and head to New York the next or wherever. So there's no telling. He said, you'll never guess where I'm at. And I said, no, there's no way of knowing, Brad. He said, well, I'm in Orlando, Florida, waiting for the hurricane to come in. So they've sent him and others down there. And I said, do what? He said, yeah, they've sent a bunch of us down here to help with that because they know it's going to hit tomorrow, I guess. And so we were, you know, we just, just petrified me. You know, thinking about that, him being down there, I don't know what the setup is. I lost contact. I can't get a hold of him on the phone again. Probably they're losing communications down there. But over the years, I was in, I went patrol, I think, three or four trips to the border down there to the Gulf, you know, doing hurricanes. And I did not have the heart to ask him this because I was, I was, I just couldn't do it. But we always told people and it was said that if you're not going to leave, if you refuse to get out, we ask you to take a marking pen black and write your name, date of birth on it at least. So if we find your body, we can be able to contact your family. I, I just couldn't tell him that. I called some, I wanted home. Anyhow, he's there and we'll try, I'll try to call him again tonight, tomorrow, maybe he can call us back. And anyway, I just, y'all keep me your prayers. We are called order. Trey, I'm going to ask you to lead us in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Please, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for loving us. Lord, we thank you, Father, that you're protecting those people in Florida. Lord, that you're sending people in harm's way, basically, Father, but we're asking that you bring our, our sons and daughters home to where they need to be, where they're loved. And I pray a specific prayer for Bob's son, Lord, that you would bring him home also, Lord. Thank you, Father, that they are ready for the storm. And that's going to protect so many lives. Lord, thank you for being here this, this day for this meeting, Father. We're asking that we honor you in every decision that we make. We pray through that, Lord, that you would give us the spirit of wisdom, knowledge and understanding. Uh, so that we will know your will more. Lord, thank you for keeping our city leaders healthy and our town healthy. And Lord, we're asking for the spirit of peace and joy to fill us even right now. Father, thank you for being here and your presence being here. We glorify you in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Nation of slaves of the queen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, one thing before I leave, I got the opportunity to go with about fifteen pastors to Washington DC to pray over the nation. Third week of this month. So if you would pray for me and all of us while we go down.
We're going to the home trail. Open forum.
Hey, I do not have anyone's.
Okay, uh, we're gonna go down number four. That's special presentation and announcements. So I'll turn it over to our city manager.
All right, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you. I wanted to bring a report to you on our vehicle replacement program that we've went with, with Enterprise and our representative is with us virtually online. His name is Nathan Glasgow. And he's got a presentation for you, but the long and the short of it is, is that we are doing well on that program. And it is doing what it was intended to do, which was several things, but most, most notably save us money. So, Nathan, thank you for being here. I'm gonna let you take it away. And if you want to start that presentation, we appreciate it.
Yeah, perfect. Well, thank you guys for having me, albeit virtually. I have to run right after this. We've got a very important third grade performance tonight. Um, I can't miss. So Bob, I do want to, before I start, say, I will be praying for your son and everybody over there and, and in Florida for, for safe travels and getting back. So, um, thank you for sharing that. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with you guys. Um, and get into this presentation. You know, Cynthia went ahead and, and, you know, buried the lead. She put, she took everything, um, took the words right out of my mouth. Everything is going well with the, the fleet program so far. Um, I want to go ahead and jump into it. So when we first came on a year ago, um, there were really four key factors we wanted to look at. And, and the reason why we were selected was to reduce costs, convenience, um, provide much better safety image and reliability to your fleet. And then overall, put in some control factors that previously hadn't existed. So let's go right to the cost category. Um, you will see, and I believe you guys have this presentation in front of you as well. Um, I will set my, my slides up very similar. Um, so on the, the top line, anything in orange is going to be the old plan. So what was in place before Enterprise came in and took over your fleet? The, the next line is going to be, we had some projections on where we thought we would be able to come in for, for the year twenty twenty four. Um, and then below that, I put our report card. How did we do in the long run? So cost wise, we were, we knocked it out of the park, really. Uh, we were able to lower the operating expense. So that's going to be the main factors in operating your fleet, your, your fuel, your maintenance, um, your telematics, all that stuff goes into operating your fleet. We lowered that bucket almost sixty percent. Um, maintenance was down seventy five percent, fuel forty eight percent. And then the telematics cost down thirty, thirty eight point one percent. So whenever you add that in, uh, we had also, uh, had total fleet budget or total fleet cost, we were able to lower thirty one point eight percent. Now, it isn't all roses and, you know, everything is great. Just, Jessica and Cynthia have been troopers and have implemented this program and have some scars to show for it, but uh, one of the ones that we had to work through early on was the aftermarket for the police vehicles. Um, there was a, a change in, um, the equipment we were needed. Uh, so we had originally budgeted for a upfront cost of about two thousand dollars a vehicle. Um, when we made the change and upgraded the radios, that price went up to about seven thousand dollars. So whenever you're looking at this upfront cost category right here, there's, there's a difference of about fifty thousand dollars and that's strictly from, um, the change in equipment. So but overall, great results from, from the first year. Any questions before I proceed? All right.
Questions?
So just wanted to give you a snapshot of where we are with implementing the fleet. Um, so again, same setup. Um, old plan, projections, and then where we actually came in at. So we had a pretty aggressive approach to implementing this program. And in year one, we wanted to replace twenty three vehicles. Um, now, at the bottom, you see, we actually replaced twenty two. The twenty two that we've replaced are not the twenty three that we had identified. We had to move some stuff around um, based on, um, manufacturer limitations, vehicle availability. Um, but we were, we were able to adapt and overcome difficulties in acquiring, um, your fleet of vehicles. But I also put the, this slide together to show you, we've also gone in and evaluated the fleet and put you in the right vehicle. So if there's, you know, one of those meter readers or, um, somebody who driving around in a large SUV or maybe a three quarter ton truck that, you know, half ton truck with regular cab could, could do, that's what we've done. So, uh, that's part of our analysis and, and where, uh, we get paid to do it. So let's see some results. Um, in one year, you have taken the average year model of your fleet from twenty twenty four all the way up to twenty nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty fourteen, all the way up to twenty nineteen. So to make a five-year jump in, in less than a year is, it speaks to your dedication and the commitment that you have to your community, your taxpayers, um, to really make sure that you put an emphasis on your fleet. Um, and a-again, you're seeing the benefits of, of, on the cost side as well. Uh, I also put on here the odometer composition. Is there a question? No, okay. Uh, I'll also put on here the odometer composition, um, and, and where we're at. With in fleeting twenty two vehicles, uh, this bar graph on the, on the far left, on the bottom, uh, thing shows exactly what we anticipate happening. Uh, you have very low mileage on the majority of your fleet now. Um, prior to us in implementing this program, uh, fifteen or half of your fleet was over the hundred thousand mile mark. Where we really see the maintenance costs, fuel economy really hitting you hard. So when I think back to the, the four key objectives, we reduce costs. We put your employees in a safer vehicle that portrays the, the image that you're trying to portray. I hear there's some new bathrooms going in there in City Hall as well. So, um, and then overall, you're going to be in a much more reliable vehicle too. So, um, really good progress on, on flipping the fleet, turning on its head. I did want to show you the benefits of our partnership. So, um, you're not familiar with the way that we lower your acquisition costs. We order directly from the manufacturer. We want to go through, um, spec out the vehicle, expect to your specifications as much as possible and really lower the acquisition costs as much as, as possible. Uh, we do also have the ability to go to dealership, um, anywhere and, and purchase vehicles from them directly. As with anything, the more hands that touch a vehicle, the higher the price goes because everybody has to get paid on it. So this, this slide illustrates, um, we, in the half ton category, we both factory ordered and we went out of stock and purchased vehicles from dealerships that were already on the ground. So the three vehicles that we purchased at a dealership had an average cost of just under fifty thousand dollars. While the factory orders were just over forty six thousand dollars. So from acquiring the vehicle directly from the manufacturer, we are able to save you seven percent from the jump. So, um, also looking down over all categories, the stock price is fifty eight thousand compared to factory ordering average at forty nine thousand. So just another benefit of being an enterprise company or, um, client. So let's talk about maintenance. Uh, again, maintenance is one of those factors that is one of the biggest, uh, contributing parts of your, the cost and, and operating your fleet. Uh, we have two categories. The first category is going to be our full maintenance program. This is going to be all of the new leased vehicles. We have your, your maintenance schedule fixed into your, um, your lease payment fixed and budgeted. Uh, everything i- is covered by the manufacturer's, uh, maintenance schedule is included with your rate. So there's no surprises. There's no peaks, valleys, all that good stuff that, um, you can pretty much set your budget and, and know where it's going to end up. The other side of that is going to be our managed maintenance. So these are going to be the vehicles, um, the, the older city owned vehicles and the police or the emergency response vehicles. So what we do is we manage all the maintenance on those vehicles. You still have the, uh, ability to go to our network of maintenance providers. We actually have added some maintenance providers there in the city for you to make it a little bit more convenient. Um, and, and as you see, the majority of your, your billing for maintenance this past year came from this category on the older vehicles, the client owned vehicles and, and emergency vehicles. So any questions on, on the maintenance programs? Okay. Next biggest category is going to be your fuel. Um, we lowered, or I guess we raised your miles per gallon. Uh, it was right at thirteen miles per gallon for your old fleet. Right now, you're sitting just under twenty. I went ahead and rounded it up to twenty miles per gallon. Um, but whenever we start presenting these, uh, moving forward, we're really going to look at the total gallons pumped. Uh, there was twenty six thousand gallons pumped last year. Um, so any penny and extra set we can squeeze out of it really does play a part in the overall bottom line for your budget. Also does pair with your telematics that we can set up some exception and, and really drive the behaviors of that. Last part is going to be the, uh, the resale of the vehicles. So we've, uh, we've spent some money, right? We, we've operated your fleet and now we, we sell the vehicles. So, um, we have been able as from Enterprise to sell six of your vehicles. Last year, we sold five. Um, and there were another two, um, PD units that were totaled out. There were insurance claims. I didn't really include those because it's not a, it's a break even, um, when you look at ours. Our side of it. The other units, um, that we've replaced have been sold through your, your traditional, uh, means, either through auction, um, listing it. Jessica has all that, that fun task that, uh, she enjoys oh so much. Uh, but we had planned for, uh, selling twenty three units, um, within the first year and, and had planned for ninety three thousand dollars worth of equity. Um, as you can see, we only sold the five units. Uh, the equity in the fleet was about thirteen thousand and I'm going to jump to the last slide here. It gives you the breakdown of that entire gambit. So we've got the, uh, the fleet costs, the equity, and then how we did annually, whenever you factor in the, the equity back into it. Um, so we had planned, you know, the, the fleet budget for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We came in actually under that at two sixty seven, um, three seventy four. So whenever you look at the old plan and your fleet budget of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and we were able in one year to cut it down to two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, we saved you a hundred and forty four thousand in a twelve-month cycle period. So when you look at it, we, that, that first objective that we, we promised you, we hit out of the park. We reduced your costs. Um, made it more convenient, uh, to access the information within your fleet. Uh, I've set up monthly calls with Jessica and Cynthia, Diane, the whole team has been on. Uh, we meet just so we, we make it as convenient as possible to get the information that they're needing. Uh, ultimately, your, your employees are driving around safer, more reliable, um, vehicles that portray the correct image. And then you've got some controls now in place with the Enterprise app that allows you to have the reporting, the visibility, um, and put some, some parameters in place to get those, uh, up to the minute notifications. So that's all I have for you. I'm going to come off my, uh, screen share. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, Mayor, Commissioner, if you guys have any questions, girl. A lot of information, but that's why I kind of bottom lined it at birth. I mean, the program is doing what we intended. Um, you know, there were a few hiccups with the upfront, um, really not, some communication issues and more upfront costs than we anticipated. Um, I do want to just say on the car, uh, the equity part of it, um, we do have, uh, not all of those have yet been, uh, sold. So there are some that still have to be sold, though at least four right now, um, and maybe more. So, um, that piece will continue to come up. Um, for the cost. So, uh, Nathan, I appreciate it. If there's no questions, we'll let you get to your little girl's performance.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Well, a lot of very information, but that's good information.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lord.
Good story. Yeah, they've done a good job for us.
Okay, that's no action, no discussion only. Uh, we'll go back down here and we'll turn it back over on the staff report to the city manager then. Go from there.
Okay, um, several things. Um, I think the first thing that I want to do is we've got our employee of the month. And, um, I'd like to call Jessica up. She's our employee of the month. So Jessica does a great job, as you all know. Um, many staff do lots of tasks. And Jessica is no exception on that. She does a lot of tasks and she does them well. And she keeps her list and she keeps on target and she's got to juggle a lot of priorities. Um, she does that well. Again, employees of the month, uh, really exhibit our core values. And I did want to go over those again. It's, uh, Breck, and so it's bold. And that's really thinking, is being innovative, thinking outside the box. And Jessica brings her local government experience is limited, but what she's done and stays is she's really leveraged her private sector um, experience and brought that to the public sector. So she does that very well. Um, responsibility, that's the R. E is excellence, um, striving for excellence. Um, C is compassion. Uh, we're a small community and we know people and we want people to know that we care about them. Um, and she does that as well. And then knowledge, um, one of the things I'd like to bring up, um, recognize her. Uh, she has been getting certified as a city secretary. So there are several classes, several programs you've got to go through. It takes, it can take up to three years. Um, she's going to be graduating and getting, getting her certification much earlier than that three years. Um, so by the end of October, basically she will have completed the program. Um, assignments to get that. And then formally it will happen in January of twenty twenty five. So Jessica, thank you for everything that we do, you do. Oh, and as an aside, she is an artist. So you guys remember, David was surprised by this. We put it out there, but the Christmas paintings on the glass windows was done by yours truly. And she's going to put her hand to the task of, um, painting on the logo on the wall. So we don't have the flags and stuff. And she will do an awesome job. She's very talented. Thank you, Phil. Um, I just wanted to give, uh, some updates on several projects that are ongoing. Uh, a lot going on, on the street project update. Um, as you know, we awarded phase one to Radon. Um, and that's two point five million dollars worth of projects on this first phase. Um, and you can see there in yellow, um, in yellow, that's going to be asphalt improvement roads. And then in, I'm going to spilling out. So right here, this is Harvey and that is going to be in concrete. Essentially that is, I hate to say it this way, but it serves as a drainage channel. So this will be concrete. So all the water from this area flows down here and it drains to the creek, um, right in here. Um, right here is the creek. Um, so how they're going to stage that notice to proceed will be October, uh, seventeenth, which is Thursday. And they are going to do this piece on Elliot in concrete and this piece on Harlem in concrete. So that would be closed. And then once those are complete and cured, um, they will do this piece in concrete and that will be closed. Um, so there is, just so you know, there is, um, people that live here and Radon is, um, talking with them and letting them know their, that driveway goes directly straight from Harvey going south. So we're going to be talking to them. They're, they're going to be inconvenienced quite a bit. Unfortunately, by that, they won't be able to access the driveway. Um, so what, we will have a detailed schedule. We don't have that yet from Radon, but we will have that shortly. But essentially, they're going to start from the northwest quadrant. And they're going to go around here. Now they are starting here with this concrete project that, um, and, uh, concurrently they will start up here with prep work, um, on the asphalt sections. So you've got West Third, um, you've got North Harvey and then Oakwood. And then we come over here to Ford and Payne. And then you come around here to the northeastern section. You've got Veal, Dyer and Flint. And then down here, you've got Gaddis and Southeastern portion, Gaddis. And this is Stoker. And then on this side, you've got Harlem and the pond and then Harding. Um, so we will have that on the website, um, with that. So excited about that project. That is about two point five million dollars, um, worth of projects. You will notice there in each quadrant. And we did that strategically, looking at the pavement evaluation that we had done. Um, so this was very strategic with our engineers and looking at wanting to make sure every section of town was hit. Um, and of course, when construction happens, starts, people might not like that, but, um, you know, keep your eye on the goal. Uh, we're going to have, um, better streets, uh, shortly. So phase one, phase two will be another probably two point five million. I mean, we have about a little over seven million dollars. Um, and then that next two million, the TWD, Texas Water Development Board projects for the water wastewater lines should start next year. They've been in design. Um, and so they'll be under construction and completed probably next year. And then those streets that were touched will come back with that last two million and redo those streets. Um, are there any questions on that before I move on? Good news. But be prepared. I mean, you might get some, unfortunately, some complaints with construction. We try to make sure that the traffic control plan um, is publicized so people know the construction is coming. Um, DRP, which is the downtown revitalization project update. Remember that is a grant. It's a five hundred thousand dollar um, grant that we got. This is a map and essentially it's, um, sidewalk improvements around the courthouse and the city hall. And you can see in yellow, those spots that are going to be touched by this project. So the notice to proceed on that project was July fifteenth. It's a hundred and twenty day, uh, project. So they should be done by mid-November. Um, barring any, um, uh, rain days or anything like that. Um, and then, uh, on the streets, again, the notice to proceed was October seventeenth. I think I said that. Um, okay, and Consolus Creek update. That is, we've been talking about that since I've gotten here and it's a big project. We kind of changed our strategy from goats to spraying and manually um, mowing and weed eating. Um, some of that does need attention to detail because there are some lines in the creek, um, that we have to be mindful of. Um, so we do as a practice spray at least twice a year in the spring and in the fall. Um, and we have been paying a contractor to come in and manually, um, cut down those, um, uh, what are they called?
Cane.
Yeah, cane, thank you. Um, and of course, all, just all the weeds. Now, we don't, now the good news is, and I think you guys know this, but, um, you know, the Texas Department of, uh, Correctional Justice, uh, Facility Walker Sale Unit. Um, we have been able to utilize their clients again. And so they have been working. They've been doing a fantastic job for us. Um, and of course, that, um, is, uh, free for us. So we're very thankful for that work that they do. This year, they didn't start because we have their help for several years. I don't know how long, but for several years, we haven't done the creek south of Walker. This year, we did, um, using the clients, we did start over, um, west of Harding. This year we did, um, using the clients, we did start over, um, west of Harding, um, where it goes there and then working around, um, I'll, I think if I say the name Prater, you guys will know where I'm talking about. So in that area coming up south to Walker. And right now they're at, um, they've gotten all the way up to Douglas and Shelton, um, and they're proceeding north. And then our contractor that we have on board is coming south. Um, he's a little bit behind schedule, but coming south from one eighty-three. Um, so they will be in the middle and that's, uh, where that is, um, at right now. So.
I think before you got here, I think we did the goats one year. Was that three or four years ago?
Yeah, that's what I heard. Yes.
Okay. And I know one thing that I ran into and I, they'll always run into. In the past, there's been some pretty good rattlesnake dens down in there. They've taken right down there a time or two when they were trying to pull something out. So I hope that's not causing, you know, this is getting the time here. Snakes are going to be going in. But again, with this warm weather, you don't know.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Well, we do provide some of the gear for, um, the clients and then of course,
Most of the clients.
Walker sale does as well.
Most of the clients don't like the snake.
No.
I can imagine.
But I know a lot of that cane they were cutting down, some of it was twelve, fourteen feet tall, unreal. So this is good.
Yeah. Well, the thing with the goats, I mean, they're not eating the cane. They won't eat that cane.
No.
So they'll eat green things, but that cane was brown.
Right.
So, um, yeah, so that's the strategy. And we have, um, you guys have approved, um, you know, more money these last two years for that. And so one of the things I will let you know, I am exploring part of that, uh, creek. And I'll just give you a teaser and we'll go on, but part of that creek is concrete line right south there. Um, so I am, uh, talking to our engineers and looking at feasibility. Of course, it'd be a big upfront cost. But over time, it might pay. It might, you know, be beneficial to look at that. So I'm, I'm going to look at some of those figures and bring those to you. And that is it. And I'm going to let Jessica cover the events. So on our upcoming events, actually this week is customer service week. And, um, I'll be highlighting our customer service ladies up front who awesome. So watch for that. You'll be seeing some highlights of them um, as well as other people in the office that do a lot of customer service. Um, on Monday, we will be closed for Columbus Day. The seventeenth on the third Thursday of the month is bulk pickup. Uh, residents need to register online the Friday before. We have made that easier. There's multiple ways for them to sign up. They can do it from their phone. They can do it from their website. They can call up here. There's a ton of ways now. So super easy. And I think that that's picked up a lot lately also. Um, on the nineteenth of the Sloan Everett Bike Ride, that's an annual event that happens every year at the park. Um, we partner with the county to do the brush pickup from the twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. The residents will put their brush out. Um, and we will come out and get all that picked up. On our regulations. Yeah, there's regulations and I, I've been putting out a little bit. I'll, I'll continue to put out some information as far as the rules and regulations. It is on our website as well. Um, so that way residents can see that. And it's going out through the text my go, um, also. So on the twenty-eighth is National Brush Responders Day. The twenty-ninth is going to be our second annual family fall fest, fall fest. We had a great time last year. And we hope that it's even better this year. Udi and we'll be talking about that later on another agenda item. The thirty-first is the Walker Street Trick or Treat. The, the chamber does that every year. And, um, the fourth through the eighth of November is municipal court week. You'll see in the consent agenda, there is an item on there. Um, just approving that. It's a proper, I shouldn't say that, well, resolution. So to do that, we'll, we'll rec- recognize our municipal court.
Thank you all night. A lot of going on. Yeah, we'll, we'll go now. Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, I was just, uh, we're all, you can, you can, the next item is the police chief.
Our chief, see?
Yes, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Um, so it's a privilege to be able to have the opportunity to, to present my people. And today, um, I'm acknowledging that, uh, we are promoting, uh, Officer Shockley to Sergeant Shockley. Um, of all the things that I've done in the short amount of time I've had, I can tell you the easiest decision I've ever had to make was, uh, who was ready for it. Every time something came up, it was always his opportunity for me to say, hey, uh, who's got this? He's got it. Every time somebody in the community said, who knows this? It's always he's the guy. Uh, he's always on the top of it. And, and, and boy, I said, like I said, when the time came about who was going to be the guy, it's this guy. So. Sergeant Shockley, if I could get you to come up. So one of the things that we like to do is we like to, uh, have the opportunity of pinning the badge. And so, um, as much as it's an honor for me, I can tell you that.
Nope.
No? Okay, well, number two left, so. We have medics standing by.
Promise me you're stabbing the feet. I would greatly appreciate if you didn't stab me. Photo op here. Photo op. Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, man. I appreciate that you earned it. Um, just so y'all know, one of the things that comes back is the gold shield represents something in our, in, in our line of work. And that is the ability to, to promote to a point. It's typically about less than ten percent of the people in law enforcement that get into that. At the point you make sergeant, this is your first level. I can tell you it's the best job I ever had. And I'm telling you, because when you start going beyond, then you're going to more meetings than you know police work. So right now you're in that meeting middle. So it works out pretty good. But the gold shield means a lot. And I'll tell you, like I said, this is a man who deserved it. And I'm really proud of the fact that this man does the work. Thank you so much.
All right. We're going to add here consent agenda. Any commission member made a request now on the consent agenda be taken up for individual consideration. So I saw, I saw, looking through nine and then we get through, we'll have somebody, uh, make a motion now.
Hopefully. I move to approve consent agenda items five through nine as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor. Thank you. Throw down the action items. Item ten, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of BEDC recommendation to approve Ox Manufacturing incentive agreement.
We've got David Miller here, uh, EDC director. He's got the next couple of items.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, we, so EDCs are bread and butter is going to be manufacturing. It's going to be what we call primary jobs. They are, uh, manufacturers who export. And so Ox, uh, manufacturing is one of those. And we've got a great opportunity to help them prepare for a pretty sizable, uh, expansion as far as their uh, their job offering. This is just the first phase of this. And so we are offering them, uh, basically the, uh, an entry level, uh, dollar amount to be able to purchase some new equipment, to relocate some equipment from one of their, uh, clients to, to ramp up some more production. We'll likely have another, uh, incentive that we've reached with them to promote the additional jobs that will come with this, uh, expansion. You got any question for me on more than that?
Motion on that?
I move to approve BEDC board recommendation for Ox Manufacturing incentive program presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor. You're up again, I think.
David loves to talk.
Um, Vera Fiber, we've talked with them for the last few months. And, um, we have reached an agreement to provide about hundreds of square feet in our office as a head end for them to bring, uh, the, the fiber trunk in and be able to put all their cabinets in and everything. And so it's a fifteen year lease with them. Uh, and this will be Breckonage's first fiber to the home. And so this is, uh, you know, one of those things that I've been working on since I've been here. And so it's great to see it's finally coming to fruition.
Is this something built in there? Could, could that be rescinded or something changed or, you know, fifteen years is a long time for anything.
So if you're on the landlord's side, fifteen years is a great thing. And so that's where we are. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it's not a lot of rent. Uh, there, it's not a lot of traffic or it's on office space. It's just basically a, a utility closet for them. Uh, if they don't want to, um, if say ten years down the road, they, they don't want to be there anymore. Uh, it's a really small cost, um, to, for the next five years. You're talking, two, uh, ten thousand dollars to walk away from a huge investment that they already have with them. So I'm not worried about it. It, it's their end. They're the ones asking for the fifteen years.
You feel good to hear her say all that fifteen.
Fifteen year lease is great. Yeah.
Right.
That's all I can guess. I'll have those days.
And they can take our, uh, and our utility closet in the back room where we all store stuff. We'll just have to figure out something different with our storage. Um, we have enough room to.
The EDC directors all.
You know, uh, and we're still looking at renovation, uh, to the office and soon. They're going to do all the build out. They're going to do the, um, the handholds out in the parking lot. They're going to commit a sizable renovation to just getting it up and going. We don't have any costs and it's purely zone.
I'm, I'm moved to approve, but you can see it's fifteen year lease with zero fiber as presented.
So motion second, all in favor. Uh, none opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, item twelve, discussing necessary action review and resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six. BEDC's vacant to vibrant grant program this, uh, second reading.
Well, this is just the second reading he presented last month.
Right.
Downtown buildings. Yeah.
Have a motion on that reading.
I move to approve the second reading of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six BEDC vacant to vibrant program as presented.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Item thirteen, discussion, any necessary action or approval of Stevens County Presley District fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget. Will?
Evening, guys. Always great to be with y'all. Uh, I have some questions. It's your own budget from other entities. I'm getting y'all kind of late, but, um, what's increased, what's happened? And I'll just kind of be brief. I've been instructed to talk really fast. So I'll start with a fast motion. But, uh, the top section there, the, the breakdown that shows my large budget items or, or categories. You can see pretty much everything's up. It's just only increased. The major thing, employee expenses, we, we increased an employee in the office after I came on in twenty-one. Started part-time and now it's full-time. So that's the big jump you see there. Outsource services is up a little bit. Uh, it's dropped off from last year because I passed my final test week before last and got certified. And I'm now chief of crazier, not chief of crazier in Kansas. I don't know that I can pull up that. I see, uh, I don't have anybody to say it's his fault anymore. So anyway, I think that saves us some money, but, um, utilities up a little bit, facilities, um, they're not us, but they're, we're spending some money on from time to time. That's why you see the big variance there. But getting down at the bottom of that, it, you have a budgeted amount, then you have the actual expenditures on the year. And below that, you see a, a line that says out of CAD surplus. So while they didn't have a chief over there and they were serving interim, the budget remained the same for those two and a half years. They built up a pretty large surplus. We've been putting that money back into facilities. Um, we had to put it into health insurance last year. We got thrown a curve ball on health insurance. So that's money that the entities have given us in previous years that has now gone back into, uh, the CAD. And we don't have a surplus much anymore. Little bit, enough, but not a large amount because we put it back in over the last five years. Um, and you can see out there beside budget requests are up thirty-six percent over the last five years. But our budget expenditures are only up thirteen percent. So we'll kind of come into the catching up, the, some of the speed. Uh, next two charts down there just involve you guys. Um, that, uh, first one is the values. Values continue to trend up. We hope that continues. Um, I didn't bring a breakdown. I'll email it to Cynthia and she can get it to you guys. It shows what your levy is made of. Y'all are largely real property. You have very little industrial, very little business personal. That business personal industrial makes up about ten to twelve percent of your levy. Um, oil and gas is minimal inside of the city limits. Um, so y'all's remains pretty consistent in what your, your values are made up of. The county has seen over the last twelve years, oil and gas made up sixty percent of their value and it now makes up eleven percent of their value. So they've seen a big shift in what makes their value up in the county. Y'all haven't had that challenge. Uh, next graph down, uh, levy's going up. Levy is the amount of tax dollars that I'll generate off our values. And rate is going down. That's what you want to see. So, um, that's a good thing. But the second graph, the second page, the larger graph comes over the picture. It feels like every year we come back asking for more and more money and those drones we fly around and my airplane that I have, that costs a lot, right? No, I don't have a drone. We do have an airplane that flies, but he only flies one month every three years. And we operate off those pictures by contract. But I get a lot of, a lot of questions. Your helicopter was flying around taking pictures. You know, I wish I had a helicopter. Um, anyway, this page shows your levy, which has gone up from a little under two million up to a little over three in the last five years. And then that line on there is, uh, your allocation, the, the part you give back to the CAD to do their work. And then the top line across there, the, the, the money line there, that's what it caught, the CAD cost you per dollar generated. So every dollar we generate for your, for the city, you can see in twenty twenty, costs you two point six four cents. And today it's, we're up to three point one six cents. So we're about three percent of the levy is what we ask to be allocated back statewide. We, there's not a good figure because some Cads collect, some don't. Um, if you look at Cads that collect statewide, they run somewhere between three and a half and five percent of the levy typically. So we're pretty well in line with that. I don't know what you pay for collection to the county. But we're pretty close to that. I think we're, we're going to fall in that margin. So it feels like more, but when you look at it in this relationship, you're making a lot more. And, uh, there are a lot of state requirements coming down the pipe for Cads. We've had to add two online databases, one for ARB. And then next year you'll get to hear all about your customer portal, because I know you're all dying to sign into another website to learn what I send you in a letter every year, but it's a requirement by law that you have it. Um, and those things cost. So you, you see those costs, you know, they come back to you. Uh, we still, we're on our value studies with the comptroller. We were at ninety point six percent this year. We're supposed to be at ninety-five. So we were still a little short when it came to the school. Uh, that affects school funding. I don't know if everybody knows that, but every time we're short, the school loses. So we're, we're still working in that direction, but we're still falling short a little bit. Um, but that, you know, that's not a, that's not where we want to be, but the, we come in and we have, we're now under what's called a targeted review with the state and they send a, an auditorium. And she goes through everything and looks at everything. And her recommendation this year was we needed more staff. And I'm like, we're not doing that. I mean, we, it's just, every answer, and I'll be recorded, I better be careful. Every answer is spend more money. And I just, I'm, I'm not there. We're trying to avoid that. So, uh, because somebody, you know, us, we all pay it when we spend more money. So we're trying to keep our expenses down and stay as low as we can. Any, any questions over what's in the slide? All are easy. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks, man.
No question. Have a motion on that, please.
I move to approve Stevens County Presley District fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget as presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor. None opposed. Item fourteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, awarding a grant administrator to assist the city with a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CDBG application and grant if funded. And I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Just as a reminder, we did seek a, uh, CDBG, um, grant for the last two-year cycle. And they, these go in two years. Um, and we were pretty close, but we didn't make it across the goal line. Um, at that time, our grant administrator was, uh, public management, um, who did that. So we are, we are seeking. Um, at that time, our grant administrator was of public management, um, who did that. So we are, we are seeking another, um, round, we're seeking a grant again for this next two rounds and, um, two year cycle, I should say. And we have a really good chance of, um, getting this. So, um, what you see, and you see in the background information in the agenda commentary, we say Panther and Fourth Street. Um, and those are the projects that we're projecting. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to talk about. When we did the scoring, the way this goes is we have two staff people that score these proposals. We got three proposals in. One from public management, one from Grant Works and one from KSBR. And, um, when we get those in, we have two staff people scoring them on a score sheet. It's kind of predetermined. And then, um, one elected official. So we did that. You see that score one, two and three. Um, we had a little bit of a hiccup and I just wanted to go over that with you and, um, the way the score sheet, the bottom line is the way the score sheets came out, they scored, um, Grant Works as the highest with the pricing factor. However, there's something that, uh, you need to be aware of. Two of the proposals used a five hundred thousand dollar grant, um, for their pricing. You can see Grant Works submitted thirty two nine and KSBR submitted fifty thousand for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, whereas public management, um, submitted fifty eight, seven, two, five, but it's for a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So two factors, the grant amount went up from five hundred to seven fifty. So on the pricing, we really weren't, we went ahead and scored it using the formula, but it really wasn't comparing apples to apples. So I wanted to point that out. So you can see Grant Works scored total of two eighty seven and then public management of two seventy four, but of course they, their higher figure is indicative of a higher grant amount of seven fifty. Um, if you go to that next slide, so one thing I would maybe take into consideration, and this is within your prerogative to do so, is looking at without that price factor, because we can negotiate that price after the fact. Okay? And so without that price factor, uh, what you see is actually public management came in with the winning number. And then Grant Works came in second, uh, public management at two thirty six, Grant Works at two thirty two and KSBR at two twenty six. So they're, they're all fairly close, um, but the pricing was kind of the different factor. You know, the other thing you, you can, and this is up to you all, um, you can look at the fact that. And I will say, I've had experience with Grant Works in another community. Um, however, Grant Works hasn't worked in Breckenridge. Public management has worked in Breckenridge. They, they did the downtown revitalization grant. They did our planning grant. And they're doing, um, the splash pad grant. So they're very familiar with the city of Breckenridge with those three things. So, um, I just wanted to bottom line that for you. It's a little bit of a snafu on how the proposals were submitted with the pricing. It's not really apples to apples. So, um, it's going to be up to you on how you would like to award it. Are there any questions on what I've?
Makes you saying that probably public management is, is our best of the three. And that's who we.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's who we use.
If you don't take in that price, I mean, that, that kind of skewed, the pricing skewed the figures is the bottom line.
Well, having, having worked with, you know, grants some day before, having a known entity is worth something, you know, personally.
Make a motion on one of them or on other, whatever.
We go with public management.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, awarding grant administration services to public management.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Item fifteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty eight authorizing the city manager to execute the extended term street use license for Cactus Cove development.
Okay, so what we have here is a situation, and I'm probably going to give you more information than you want, but it is in the agenda commentary, but, um, you know, the bottom line is normally when you flat a neighborhood and you, you know, a developer comes in and builds, they're responsible for putting in all the infrastructure and they are really responsible for putting in all the infrastructure for all of that flat. Um, we have a situation where Cactus Cove was put in many years ago, but they, the developer at that time did not put in all the infrastructure for the entire flat. And so now fast forward to, you know, current times, because I believe it was in the, in the eighties, somewhere around in there. Um, you know, you have another developer that has bought the remaining section. They're still responsible to put in that infrastructure. Um, but it's already, part of it is already developed. So, um, but we've been working with the developer and their engineer and our engineer reviewing their plans. And essentially, what we have to do is, um, basically the subdivision flat was previously filed and the sewer main had already been constructed according to the original layout. However, there was no direct access for the service line at lot eleven and you'll. Okay, so it's kind of blurry, but this is lot eleven. Okay, so this is the existing sewer line here, right here. And then this is, uh, I'm sorry, water, uh, sewer line, sorry. And then this is the sewer line that is going to be, um, a service sewer line. So that is anytime, you know, you have the sewer line in the road and then the line that comes to the house is the service line that the homeowner is responsible for. So this is the lot that doesn't have access. So what we are allowing with the street use license agreement is for them to construct it in our right of way and, um, allow connectivity for this lot here. And that's lot eleven. And then again, these guys can connect here. That makes sense? So basically the street, it just gives them the right to put it in, because this is the sixty foot right of way of the roadway right, right here. From here to here, it's a sixty foot right of way. Well, that's what the street use license agreement is. And the engineer has reviewed this, um, staff has reviewed it. And we are good with this. And so we're recommending approval for you guys to consider.
Move to approve a resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty eight as presented.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Item sixteen, discussion, any necessary action regarding family fall festival. We'll go back to.
So this is, um, we're really, um, excited about this project. We did it last year with, in concert with the chamber. Udi always does a great job with these things. So we're partnering with the chamber and with the county. And, um, last year it was, you know, they already had an event, Walker Street Trick or, uh, Trick or Treat? Yeah. Uh, and so we did do it on that day. There was some concern, um, because there's a lot of schools that have trunk or treat on that day. There's a lot of neighborhoods that have events. Um, I think the first year, I mean, it was pretty well attended. However, you know, we did get some feedback from some parents that were like, that's a lot for kiddos to do in one night. So, um, I think what the committee and talking with everybody, we're going to try to, you know, have it on the Tuesday of each, you know, fourth Tuesday, I guess, or whatever, the Tuesday between Halloween. And, uh, again, we kind of shut down the square. I'd say the square is not really a square, but we can start calling it a square. So it's Elm behind and then Rose. So we set up food trucks. Uh, we've got a costume contest for the kiddos. We've got pumpkin decorating contest. And that we do one internally for the city employees that everybody externally can vote on these decorated pumpkins. And then also the business owners can participate this year in that. There's a photo booth opportunity. There'll be some food trucks there. Um, am I missing anything? Boots from businesses will sit up on the court. Yeah.
They gonna do it in the courthouse or are they gonna just do it?
On the lawn.
On the lawn area.
Kind of like on the sidewalk too, in the front, in front of Walker. Also businesses and any other entities, welcome to set up for trunk or treat too, to help give out, pass out candy. And we give out a lot of candy last year.
Part of competing with the, the hill on Halloween night. It is. You haven't had the joy of that one yet.
I don't remember. I mean, but it was, it, a lot of candy. We thought we would have way more than enough and it was. Yeah. A lot of candy we've given out. So we, we think the, you know, for our first year event, we think it went over pretty well, but we did want to be responsive to some concerns. So, um, yeah, that's so, this is just approval of that event. It does involve closing down some streets. Of course, it's going to be limited with the schedule of the DR, the downtown revitalization project. So we are, we have their schedule. We're mindful of that. Yeah, it'll be around that.
I move to approve the family fall festival as presented.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you. Anything for the next agenda you want to put on it? Think about it. I'm tackling if you don't. It is six thirty two. We're charmed. Thank all of you.
I'm getting a lot of mail. Scares me everything.
Yeah, that's it.